Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our November 13 Town Council meeting. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Please let the record show that Councilman Cirillo will not be in attendance this evening.
So, good evening. Good evening, everyone. First thing on our conference agenda is a Mayor's Proclamation and my colleague for Pancreatic Awareness Month. Todd, I'm not sure how many years we've been doing this, but we welcome you. And Jerry has a proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President, my colleagues. Good to see you again. Thank you again for being here. Hello. Thank you, Council President, my colleagues, Todd Cohen and your family, your brother. Again, thank you for being here. It's been many years that I've had the pleasure of making this proclamation for pancreatic cancer awareness. You know, this year alone, in coming up to 2020, you know, 50,000 new cases will be diagnosed. And sadly to say, 44,000 will die. And it takes people like yourself with such integrity and heart and compassion to try to, something may be find a cure, but whatever you do, you're always making it that there's a comfort level, that people and patients with pancreatic cancer don't feel alone. They don't feel abandoned. And that's the most important thing. And you're to be commended along with your entire family for what you do and what you speak for, and that pancreatic patients know that you're there for them and they're not alone. Proclamations are important, you know. People think they're just words and everything else, but I can honestly tell you that, along with my council colleagues and the administration and the members of the entire West Orange Township community, you know, we sincerely back this and we fully support it and we're always here. We personally, we have personal affections to pancreatic cancer. We understand the impact and the loss, but you never give up hope. And I hope that you never give up hope and that the rest of the community, particularly the West Orange community, never gives up hope. So if I may, I'd like to read the Mayor's proclamation. Whereas in 2018, sorry, these are not reading glasses, okay. Whereas in 2018, an estimated 55,400 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States and 44,330 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the third leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second leading cause around the world in 2020. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 9%. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally in later stages and only 10% of pancreatic cancer patients are diagnosed when the disease is confined to their pancreas. And 9.1% of the pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately 1,300 deaths will occur in New Jersey in 2018. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related deaths across the world. Whereas there will be an estimated 418,000 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide in 2020. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of West Orange are enhanced has a direct result of increased awareness about the symptoms and risk of pancreatic cancer, and research into early detection causes ineffective treatments. Therefore, be resolved that the town designates November 15, 2018, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the Township of West Orange. Respectfully submitted, Mayor Robert D. Parisi, Mayor of the Township of West Orange. Thank you, Todd. Thank you so much. Please.
I could see that.
Thank you. Yeah, my brother Lee works at West Orange High School. I work at Liberty. So kids always can ask me, "You one of the Kelly astronauts? Is that you?" That's not me. Not me. I want to thank the council, the mayor, for this proclamation. You know, the survival rate's 9%. I mean, that number is staggering. When my father was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in 2001, that number was about 6%. So we haven't really made much progress in the fight against this disease. This Thursday is World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day, so I implore everyone to wear purple. Tomorrow at Liberty, we are having a purple day where the students and faculty will be wearing purple ribbons and there are facts in the morning announcements. It's more about money. It's also about awareness for this disease. If you know someone that's fighting pancreatic cancer, go to pancan.org. That's P-A-N-C-A-N.org. There are free resources available. There's a hotline where people can get information about clinical trials that can save their lives, information about nutrition. Pancreatic cancer, it's a disease that's growing at a staggering rate. It's projected to be the second-leading cause of cancer death by 2020. It's past breast cancer. 1,300 people are expected to die from this disease in New Jersey alone. We had a walk in Parsippany this past Sunday. We had about 3,000 people there. We raised over $400,000 for the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, but that's a small piece of what we really need to do to battle this disease. Like I said, pancan.org, tons of great resources. I want to thank the council once again. I want to thank Karen and Shari for helping arrange this. By declaring this Thursday, November 15, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day, you're helping us do the critical work of making awareness for this disease. I'm wearing purple all month, and you know, I think it's really important to raise awareness and, you know, support this cause and helping us. You mentioned before about hope. We have some survivors that I know. We have one 13-year survivor. We're hoping to build hope, and we need to do that by raising awareness and funding for this disease. So thank you so much.
So, Lee, is this for Movember also? I mean, how timely. How timely.
I guess it's our memory. The word for years ago is something bad. It's only Harry can grow.
But for men's health, no, it's very timely for men's health. Yes. Okay. I know Lisa's here from the library. Lisa, did you want to? Oh, wrong Lisa. Okay. By association.
Good evening, everyone. Lisa Tuzo, 15 Carter Road. But I'm here, most importantly, as the Vice President of the West Orange Public Library. Consider this a PSA of what's going on in the library for the next month. We are just about ready to issue museum passes to the Newark Museum. This is, these are new passes that will provide admission for two adults and all children under 17 that accompany these adults. It's a gem in the city of Newark, and through your library, you can get free admission as well as free admission to the New Jersey State Parks and the Montclair Art Museum through this museum pass system. As long as you're a member of the library, you can utilize this resource. Also coming up on Saturday, November 17, from 2:00 to 3:30, jazz musician Jan Harden will be performing in the library. Also in November, on Monday, November 19, at 4:30, storyteller Luanne Adams will be presenting Treasures of the Hearts that celebrates families from all over the world. It is a family-friendly program, so it's good for people of all ages. The library will be closed on November 21 at 5:30 through the Thanksgiving holiday. So just a snippet of what's happening in the library, and each month, the programs change, and one of us will be back to give you more information then.
Great. Thank you.
I'm Timmy Williams, Chairwoman of the Human Relations Commission. I'm just here to remind everyone that November 30 is the deadline for our MLK nominations for 2019. Information is on our website at HRCWestOrange.org, HRC@WestOrange.org. Please feel free to nominate a West Orange resident or township employee for the 2019 MLK Award. We look forward to getting plenty of nominations. It's always a fun event. Acknowledging Martin Luther King Jr. And the date for the event next year is January 21, 2019, and it will be held at the Liberty School Auditorium. Look forward to seeing you guys there and receiving those nominations. Thank you.
Thank you, Timmy.
Lisa Fahory, 201 Gregory Avenue. Tonight, not here representing the library, but honored to be representing the West Orange Animal Welfare League. A lot of participants were, or a lot of you guys were participating in the Barktober, First Annual Barktober Halloween Parade, which raised a great deal of money on behalf of the all-volunteer West Orange Animal Welfare League. And I just wanted to express their thanks. Sponsors, organizers, participants, this is an animal-loving community that came together to do wonderful work. I did ask my cats, were they interested in marching? And they said, "Get lost." Not in so many words, but if you own a cat or have ever been around a cat, you know what I mean. But it was a really terrific event, and we just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the West Orange Animal Welfare League and your support. Thanks.
Nicely done. All right, how about back to our agenda? Best Practices survey. John, you're going to?
Yes. It's that time of year, every year, the state puts out a list of questions or objectives to see, to help municipalities gauge how they're doing and what the state calls a best practices or what they feel would lead to best practice. Last year, we scored in the high 80s. They had about 25 questions. This year, they've made a lot of changes in it, and there were 61 questions, and this year, we scored in 93%. So the objective of this is not only to get as high as you can in terms of, you know, complying with the best practices that we agree with, but also is to maintain our budget because if you, if you get below 70, I'm sorry, if you get below 46 questions, they start taking some aid away from you. So to make sure that we're maintaining our aid. So, and we've never been close to that. That's something we've always been. We've always been very high in the high 80s or 90s. And so this year, we, there's four questions that we missed. One of them, or just to go over it, one of the questions had to do with audit findings, and we had one. So it was from the previous year. Another is your date of when you introduced and adopted the budget. This year, we missed the deadline by about a week. Again, that's kind of a small thing, but again, it's something that they're looking at. The other was, one of the questions they asked is whether or not we have a professional planner on staff, which, as we know, that's been an issue that's been discussed here. And the last one was whether or not the municipality has permitted a more restrictive pay-to-play ordinance, and we haven't had one, we've got the same one, or does it, we've always had.
Were there any surprises or any new categories or anything added that we hadn't looked at before?
Yeah, there, some of the new stuff they're looking at for the future is whether or not we're buying electric cars or, you know, the types, you know, fuel-efficient vehicles and whether they meet our needs or not, too. It's not just whether you're buying them or not, but to the extent that it meets needs.
Ask a question. Councilman.
So they asked you for questions, so now you submit them back? Like, I'm just curious as their feedback to our answers, like in regards to the planner, when you say there's a consultant, did you receive feedback or?
Oh, no, no. This is not, this is, they'll take the answers that they get from this year, from all the municipalities, and decide what they're going to ask in the next year. If they feel like, if questions continue year after year, it's kind of their indicator that they don't think enough municipalities are reaching that particular item. Sometimes they come on one year and they go off the next year, and that's usually because everybody says, "Yeah, we do that." And so, but there's no, there's no direct feedback on it. The only direct feedback is that we don't lose eight.
Okay. So we're in compliance, and they asked a couple questions.
It's not really a rating. It's, you know, they just, to the extent that you, that they might take money back from you if you did very poorly, just as an incentive to do better. And their, you know, their objective really is more educational, to suggest some of the things that they feel are important. You know, to be honest with you, and I won't go into detail, there's some things that they think are important that I honestly believe that are just the opposite. But, you know, some of the stuff is not, is based on viewpoints, not necessarily on facts. So.
So they're recommending electric cars? That doesn't mean you have to go out and purchase them.
Right. For instance, if electric cars don't meet our budget because they're more expensive, well, then that's a decision that we make. And if we don't feel that it makes sense for us, you know, we need to do what we think is right. Again, sometimes we're at odds with some of these, but not on very many. I mean, usually, just like one or two, then there'd be like head scratchers, why is that, why is that in there?
Got it. Okay. The one about missing the budget date, was that because of the way our council meetings lined up? Or did we know ahead of time that it had to be a certain date?
No, no. It was about our, the ability for us to get all the data in place that we needed in order to present a budget to you, and then once, once that's the case, then again, whatever, I don't remember specifically, but in terms of contemplation of alternatives. Plus, you know, look, the reality is, is that for, where this comes from is for years, the state precluded us from having a budget till, way until July and August sometimes. One year, we actually had one as late as September or October. And so, you know, they now push to get this done earlier, and sometimes it's just not possible to get done. But obviously, you know, it is deadline, you know, it's a statutory deadline. You're supposed to try to do everything you can do to make it. So they're, they're making a statement that they want people to continue to try to adopt their budgets as early as possible, and that's really, really good idea to do that. Sometimes it's just not possible.
What's the date for this coming year?
It's the same every year. You introduce, the statutory date is the 10th of February for introduction, which always gets extended by the Division of Local Government Services for at least a month, and then you usually have until the meeting after that, that deadline in order to introduce. And if you, so we missed it by one meeting cycle. It's, was not, it certainly wasn't terribly extended.
Yeah, because we met in March.
Yeah.
Because I haven't had a chance to really look at this closely, so I appreciate you focusing on the noes. On the first page where it asks about the audit findings in 2016 and where they repeated in 2017, that's really housekeeping. I think the real issue is, have we finally fixed the issue with properly encumbering funds? Have we actually taken the steps now? Have we solved that?
We take stronger steps every year. It's probably, it is the most difficult. Every municipality has this problem, this issue. It's more a focus on, because the audits are random in terms of the samples, sampling that they take, sometimes you get a sample where there's, there's none, and sometimes you get a sample where there's quite a few. In terms of what we've done internally to solve it, every, every year, we've put in different additional controls. This year, we're moving forward with some type of a record-keeping of when we discover them upfront, you know, to letting the departments know that we found it and asking them for, to look at that and give us some explanation as to what's happening and then why. Again, it's very difficult, you know, because you could get caught on something as, as something as like, you know, a part that you need for a vehicle, you know, sometimes, again, you have to make judgment calls. You know, do we have to, like, we need to get a vehicle fixed right now for, you know, it's the middle of a snowstorm. You know, do you, do you wait till the next day when, you know, maybe somebody's around to do a per事or, you can go get it fixed? And that's an extreme example, but I'm using a hyperbole to make the point. Is it, you know, sometimes you run into obstacles to this, and if that, those end up getting audited, as part of the audit, you're going to get a comment like that. We strive very hard to try to comply, and we, again, with something, we work on harder every year.
Thank you.
Be curious about the feedback with the planner, too, because there are so many municipalities that have consultants as their town planners.
Many, very many. That's kind of a head scratcher to me in terms of, like, you know, what, you know, you have 566, 565 municipalities, some of them are as small as 5,000 residents. Do they need a full-time planner? Why, what is, you know, and then, these questions are equal to every town. So, you know, I think that, I'm not suggesting that it's good or bad, I'm just saying it's just kind of a funny question to show up on this survey.
And speaking of dates, in 2019, I know that Victor's at the League of Municipalities this week. We should look at our calendar in 2019. I know we have some dates, but we should look at that for November, for next, for 2019. I don't know if that conflicts with the League.
I think it probably doesn't.
I think it might. We'll take a look. Okay? Any comments, questions? Okay. Thank you, John. Jack, any comments on the update for redevelopment?
Obviously, it's moving along, as you can see. They are having a open house on Thursday at 4 o'clock for anyone who wants to go to the council or the mayor's office. They want to show us the new apartments that they're doing in the Battery Building. I think they're rented, last I spoke to them, they're rented up to 42 units or 41 units.
People were moving in on Sunday. They had an open house on Sunday, and people were moving in on Sunday.
So they're, they're moving along. Y R over R, they've now taken out, they have three other apartments there that they're going to rent now because they were using those to show people.
Models.
Yeah, as models. So they're going to rent those three out. And, you know, they're moving along. They're moving along very well. As you, I'm dying to see the, the.
Penthouse?
Lounge.
The penthouse suits. Yeah, I want to see what they look like, but we'll see those hopefully on Thursday.
Comments?
I mean, if I may, Council President.
Don't ask about commercial.
I'm sorry?
Don't ask about commercial.
Okay.
Find out on Thursday.
Oh, he's still not telling me about the commercial stuff. Actually, I had a conversation with him today, too. But the interesting thing is, someone had called me last week and wanted their phone number because they were looking to put something commercial in it.
Good.
So, see where it goes.
Moving along.
Yep, moving along.
Any idea when construction is projected to be completed on Phase 1?
He keeps telling me that they're, they're going to be done by the end of December. I'm waiting till Thursday to see what's done in there now to see if that's going to be the case. But that's what they're telling, that they could possibly be done by the end of December.
Thank you.
I know the pool opened today, and the gym has been open. They're just waiting for furniture in the lounge and theater area. Could be. Councilwoman?
Yes, a question for you. Are the owners going to be there, like, we'll be able to ask them questions? Are they going to be?
I don't know if the owners are going to be there or if it's the people who are renting the units, to be honest with you. I didn't get that from the email that they sent. All they said was, anyone who wants to be here on Thursday, they're going to do a tour through the building for council members and members of the administration, as well as the mayor. So I'm not so sure whether Mr. Diaz is going to be there or not.
Then you could ask a question. Then you could ask your question.
He went the other day. He's got to work.
No, I went, I went already.
Thank you, Jack.
You're welcome.
Council Liaison?
Okay. All right, may I? Or Council?
Go ahead.
You sure you want to go first? I'll go first.
I don't care.
All right. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, my colleagues. The next meeting of the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting will be Wednesday, November 28, 2018, at 7:30 at the Excess County Educational Center located at the wonderful Turtleback Zoo. Looking forward, attendance has been going up. We want your input. We'll be presenting again the final submission for the 15 points that we're trying to accomplish. We had more input from our members at the last meeting. We had to make some changes. So we'll present it, and then I'll send it to Legal for Legal's formal review and putting it together as part of our 15 points for a resolution, Council President. Also in November is our Downtown West Orange Alliance meeting on November 20 at 7:00 p.m. right here in Town Hall in the conference room. Please come, especially if you're a business owner, and I'd like to give information on what we do and what we can do for you as a businessman, person, within the downtown corridor. We look forward to that. More final information will be coming forward with our downtown open house, which will be held at the West Orange Community House. The new gym, you get to see the new gym that the West Orange Community House built. Mr. Seado did a fantastic job in pulling it all together, and I'm very thankful to my fellow board members under the Community House. You all should come and see it. It's just a real knockout of a gym. It's just unbelievable.
What date is that?
I'm sorry?
What date is the open house?
I make, I think it's the December 1st.
December 1st.
December 1st. I just wanted to make sure that there was no change since the last time I spoke to her. Also, there'll be breakfast with Santa, right, Councilwoman? And that'll be held on the same day. And then that night, too, will be the Christmas tree lighting down here at Town Hall with a petting zoo and our normal hot chocolate and fantastic arrival of Santa Claus. So we all look forward to the holiday season. I hope you'll all come out and share the great enjoyment that the township puts together. And that's about all I have to say right now, Council President.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman?
Yeah, so are we? No. They're not certified. Oh, they're not certified yet? They're not all in yet. Okay. Okay. I was just going to congratulate, okay? So, they're not in yet. Okay. I'd like to thank Sherri Cork, Joe Brennan, and our veterans and our town staff for putting a beautiful Veterans Day ceremony Sunday morning. As usual, it was very moving, thanks to the West Orange High School Jazz Band and our Air Force Junior ROTC were in attendance for coming down. And it was really nice to see this past Sunday. And it was really nice to see this past Sunday, was a lot of our Cub Scout troops out and paying their respects to our service members. So, nice touching ceremony every year. It felt beautifully on a Sunday, so attendance was a little larger than normal. But thank you to all our military or veterans for their service to our country. As Councilman said, breakfast with Santa is at Washington Elementary School on December 1st. $10 for adults, $7 for students, and that will run from 10 to 12 before the festivities begin at the Community House. Prior to that, this upcoming weekend, Thanksgiving's Day weekend, Saturday, November 24th, remember to shop local throughout the town. American Express each year does shop local in your community, and we are here in West Orange, so hopefully you'll see the signs in the local stores. Please go out and support your local businesses. I know I always get a kickstart to my holiday shopping that day, so it's a fun day. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate, so you could park and walk, and like I said, it's throughout the entire township. So whether you're downtown, you're up in Pleasantale Center, there's a lot of great shops to shop in. So I hope you could support our local ven, vendors, or businesses, rather. And then on Sunday, the Recreation Department is, last year, they had the Fire Department have Santa Claus travel around throughout the township. So that will be happening again, but this time on Sunday, the 25th, and they're going to have him stop at various elementary schools. So for parents out there, just check in with your school on the Recreation website for the times, and I think the kids could once again track the activities through the app and the cellphone. So that should be a nice, another fun day sponsored by our Recreation Department. And last but not least, what else do I have here? As far as our Public Relations Commission, we had a meeting the other night. Boring year for us, but busy in regards to we're putting together a township booklet that we're hoping to present at the mayor's breakfast. So hopefully, and Ms. Anderson's been working diligently for us on that with the rest of the committee, so we're looking forward to presenting that to the public at the end of January. You'll have a lot of great information. It's a brochure that we could have updated every two years, and it will have a lot of the township activities and important information that, of all our departments. That will be very helpful and communicate, a strong communication piece for all our residents. And I just want to thank Mrs. Duffy and Ms. Ayovino and Director De Nova. We've been working on a grant for our senior citizens with Partners in Health. We have a letter of tank going out next week that they've been working on, and hopefully that will get approved, and the beginning of the year we'll be able to submit our application. So, a lot of, you know, a lot of working pieces. I don't have too many details just yet, but just to let folks know, there are, there is work in progress on regards to that. The information from our senior citizen study will be very useful, and hopefully in, in gardening the grant, so we look forward to that. So we'll just keep, keep progress moving. And I think that's it, Council President, for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Friends of the West Orange Public Library wanted to thank everyone for their support of the Third Annual Book Sale. We sold over 1,300 books during the sale on the 5th, 6th, and 7th of October, and netted additional eight, more than $1,800 for the library. The Friends will also be sponsoring at its next meeting on Monday, November 26, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Friends will be hosting Ms. Yael Katzwer, who is the managing editor of the West Orange Chronicle. She's going to come speak about making your community newspaper work for you. And the West Orange Historic Preservation Commission will be meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, November 14th, Town Hall, second floor, conference room at 7:00 p.m. to go over some revised plans for the rectory at St. Mark's Church, the historic property down on the east entrance to, to the town on Main Street. Hope to see somebody, some of you folks there.
Great. So on Friday, the West Orange Arts Council honored Ken Mandell, Chair of the West Orange Film Society. Ken appealed and entertained and educated our community, the outline community, for the past 14 years. God bless you, it's true. So please visit westorangearts.org for more information, upcoming shows, and exhibits. The West Orange Art Center is located at 551 Valley Road, next to Lunar Stage and Pink Cupcakes and the police substation. The, on the planning board, the Township Planner and Planning Board, serving as the Master Plan Subcommittee, will begin stakeholder meetings on December 5th. There will be discussion of the elements, review of the elements of the master plan. We meet here on December 5th, Wednesday, at 7:30 here in Town Hall.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'd like to add one more thing, Council President, if may. I, I think we'd all be remiss, especially with Councilwoman Castellino's comment about the wonderful Veterans Day services that were held this past Sunday. I, I would be remiss, as I think my colleagues would be, if we don't just have a moment of silence for a member of West Orange VFW. And actually, Town Clerk reminded me, it was exactly eight months ago that I presented Mr. Albert Guidano with a proclamation honoring his 100th birthday. And I am sorry to say that this past week, Mr. Guidano passed away. So I'd like us all to have a moment of silence for him and to think of the memory and the services that he gave to this country and to the township of West Orange.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. One other, go ahead.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
In regards to the, to the master plan and the stakeholder meeting, so exactly who can attend that meeting?
Well, it's open to the public, so.
So it's open to anyone? Will there be, because when I attended one of the meetings a few months back, when they were first talking about the master plan at the planning board meeting, there would be, I guess, will they have individual meetings with different, with like, the staff or with community groups? Or how are they?
The, so with the planner, the plan is that the, the planner will begin these interviews. It starts with different township departments. They're all listed, Building and Construction, Engineering, Fire, Health, Library, Planning, and Police, Public Works, Recycling, Recreation, and then the Boards and Commissions will all be interviewed, also the Arts Council, Downtown Alliance, Environmental Commission, Historic Preservation, Open Space, Pedestrian Safety and Zoning, Board of Adjustment, and then there will be other stakeholders, Board of Ed, Chamber of Commerce, Essex County Parks and Recreation, Essex County Planning and Transportation. We're going to add the Thomas Edison National Historic Park, and the goal is to start the interviews, to see if there's any issues affecting the township as they relate to the elements of the master plan that can be addressed and incorporated. So the planner is really doing all of that, and he will bring the discussion to the, to the planning board.
Okay, so, okay, so I know you're our representative. Will, will the rest of us have input? Like, can we, will we have a meeting in regards, or we would just have to attend one of the other meetings?
I can provide information as it comes in.
But I know if they're meeting with the Board of Education, will the, will the planner be able to meet with us for our input on the master plan?
Sure. It's interesting that it's not in here, right?
I would assume my colleagues would have some input.
Yep. I think once you hear everything he has to say, I think that we should do an overall when he hears from different departments.
Yes, yeah, I would appreciate that. And I know, and I appreciate, I went to the one planning board meeting and presented them with the senior survey.
Right.
And talked about, you know, 55 and older and aging in place, and they were very receptive to our survey, so that was, that was helpful.
Another goal or objective.
So we will have our opportunities, the council, to have input on the master plan.
This takes months to do.
No, no, I realize that, I just want to make sure we'll have an opportunity.
Complete Streets is already ported.
Oh, you know, that was the notes, that's in here also, because that's already in the master plan, so that will just be Complete Street. Yep. And the Rutgers Sewers, Stormwater Management, all of that will be included.
Good.
Councilman?
Is, is that by any chance up on the town website? I think people might be very interested to see, to see that, yeah.
Sure.
Maybe we can arrange to get it up on the.
It's just the stakeholder interviews that they're starting.
Right.
Right, and if anybody does have some organization that you think should be included on this, to let us know. You can do that.
Thank you.
I do have one other announcement. It's the 2018 Annual Community Thanksgiving Luncheon. This will be at noon, November 21st. Happy Thanksgiving, and everyone. Next Thursday already is Thanksgiving. This is the Wednesday prior to Thanksgiving at noon at Mayfair Farms. The guest speaker is Bill Keegan. He is the founder, president of Hart 911. Tickets are $45 in advance, $55 at the door. This is the one event that is sponsored by the West Orange Chamber of Commerce, the Unico, Lions Club, Lions International, and Rotary. They also ask to bring a non-perishable food item to be donated to the Holy Trinity Food Pantry. Tickets can be purchased at westorangechamber.com. Noon on Wednesday, November 21st. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Garino?
Present.
Councilwoman Krokovia?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
First on our agenda is public comment. If anyone has comment, concern, please come forward, name and address. Yes, ma'am?
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. I just got a complaint from a newbie here. She can't hear what everybody's saying. Please speak into your microphones.
Thank you.
I have a question, a couple of questions. One is on this, excuse me, Councilwoman Garino, thank you for recognizing a senior. I appreciate that. 2025, 253-18, authorizing the money that goes to the senior groups and senior housing. One question, who physically gets these checks? In other words, at the rental house, who would get the check, the $250 check? You can answer that later. The other thing is, I was here months and months and months ago, and I know we had a big election, everybody had to work on the election, but I was talking about the soliciting ordinance and some language that really needs to be changed. Does anybody remember that? And Legal was supposed to work on it. What's Legal doing? Will we get an answer eventually? Will they change it? Now that the time changed, I got more phone calls from my neighbors.
Yeah.
Okay? It gets dark earlier.
I'll follow up on that.
Nobody's going to go read the Star Ledger and find that when the sun came up and went down. And let's see. I'm letting you off easy tonight, that's it. Thank you.
On the resolution, though, Madam Clerk, though, on the resolution, that was one of my questions that Mrs. Morelli just mentioned. It has the period commencing, commencing January 2018 through December 2018. I think those dates.
They're correct.
That this resolution we're approving now for this year, even though, this is for the senior citizens, recreation?
It'll be paid during this, this year.
Okay, so it's not moving forward for next year?
As it is every year, no, it's, yeah. We, we pay at the end of every year. It's, it's part of the process.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Mark Meyer with 19 Howell Drive. I'm sorry, Councilman Cirillo wasn't here, I just wanted to wish him well. He's got to tell him that he has a vitally important job dealing with housing in Newark, and that's important to all of us. Important to the county, important to the region, to the state, and I hope he does a great job. I hope he can avoid all the messes that have previously been involved in that administration. So Victor, if you're watching, Councilman, I, I hope you do very, very well, and I wish you all the best. Talking about the election, two weeks ago, I received this mail piece, election piece, paid for and authorized by the election funds of John McKeon, Myla J.C., and Senator Richard Cody. And I, I think this is really an objectionable piece. What, what they're doing is they're, they endorsed the reelections of Mayor Parisi, of Councilman Cirillo, and McCartney, which I think is inappropriate because this is not supposed to be a Democratic or Republican race. It's supposed to be a nonpartisan race. But by their stepping in and funding these endorsements, they're, they're turning it into a political event. Even worse than that, even worse than that, I was appalled on the bottom where they endorsed two candidates for Board of Education, and that should not be allowed. The Board of Education should not be politicized. Education in the town needs to be independent. No one on the Board of Education should be indebted to any political party. These, the two candidates now, I guess, won, at least one of them won, I suppose. One of them now will feel indebted to toe the line for McKeon, J.C., and Cody, and the Democratic Party. I think that's totally wrong. It's absurd. It should be condemned, and the township should not allow this to take place anymore. So if you speak to these, you know, lawmakers, please tell them that they stepped over the, over the line. They did what's not correct, and they should stay out of our educational system. They should also stay out of our town politics, by the way. It's supposed to be nonpartisan, keep it nonpartisan. Don't have to throw their money around everywhere. That's about it. I just want to congratulate the new councilperson. I see she's here. Right? And it'll be an interesting experiment in government because our council will now be, have three women and two men, which will be a nice change. And I hope the council will now have the wherewithal to stand up to the administration because the administration has been entrenched, it's been, you know, my way or the highway, and the council has never really fulfilled its role of being the leading legislative body in the town. It's always been sort of a rubber stamp of the administration. And I'm hoping now with three, three women on the council, that this will change, that the council will fall into its, will, will retake its correct role as leading the government of West Orange, and having the administration fulfill what the council wants done, and not the opposite way around. So no more rubber stamping the mayor and the administration. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Good to see all of you.
Welcome.
Sally Malanga, Ridge Road. I wish everyone who campaigned for public office a hearty round of applause. We are all here to have experiences, and we will continue to pursue them in the most admirable way. There will be a new person added to the town council in January, and there's good reason to have new people representing us, and that is that many of us feel that we're not always heard. So I, you know, I agree with some of the things that Mark Meyerowitz just said. They, all right, all of them, Mark?
Yes.
Yes. We do need more independent voices in our local government. I, I mean, he makes a good point about the Assemblymen and the Senator Cody and McKeon stepping in to endorse. in to endorse candidates. I do agree that that was an interference that undermines our independence. So there, you know, there are certain things that we've asked for as citizens, and I know you're all busy on boards and commissions, and I really admire all the different things you do. I know you work hard, and I know you think you're being responsive. There are certain areas of transparency, certain issues relating to the taxes of the town that people are upset about. It's very expensive to live here, and walking the streets of West Orange, we've found many people quite upset about how they were going to afford to stay. So I hope you'll take that in mind, you know, as you make decisions on our budget going forward and how and if our town gets further developed. As we know, we need more commercial development and no more residential development. So the question is, will you be independent when it comes to making those decisions? And I look forward to being supportive of this body and this council moving forward. Feel free to call me anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm before you today.
Can you state your name and address?
I'm sorry. Rosella Holloway, 76 Leddington Road, West Orange, New Jersey. And I came in this evening just to congratulate Mayor Parisi on a job well done. He ran a very good race with no bashing and name-calling, and he just ran a very, very good race. So I wanted to congratulate Mayor Parisi on that. I wanted to congratulate Councilwoman McCartney. West Orange overwhelmingly put you back in office, and there's a reason. We thank you here in West Orange, and I can talk about myself, my family, and my neighbors in the Gregory section. I hear the new councilwoman is coming on board. I'm not sure. Okay. Congratulations to you. I admired Mayor Parisi's words when he said that he's going to work with everybody, whoever they are, he's willing to go forward and work with them, and he put a lot behind him. Councilman Cirillo, he's not here. I'd like to congratulate him as well. I did say that evening that God had another plan for him, but I hope his plan is to bring him back the next election, election to run again. He was a phenomenal councilman. He is a phenomenal councilman, and I thank you. I thank him. Also, I just wanted to say to the people of West Orange, I was very embarrassed and humiliated by some of the comments that was forwarded to me against our mayor and his family. It was just really, really nasty and dirty, and I was embarrassed to say, I lived in West Orange at that point. I hope that this never happens again and that the people who made those nasty, ridiculous comments would look themselves in a mirror and ask if that would be right with God, if they know God. Again, Mayor Parisi had a very good concession speech. He, I'm sorry, Mayor Cirillo, Councilman Cirillo had a very good concession speech. He said the mayor, the people of West Orange voted. He respected them highly. He respected change, and he's willing to continue to work with the people that is here in West Orange, council, mayor, and the citizens. Mayor Parisi said something that was very interesting to me. He basically turned the other cheek. It's something I wouldn't be able to do. And they talked about his family. They talked about him. And, you know, I think he could settle, he was settled for talking about him, but talking about his family was a bit much. So I hope that the people in West Orange can find in their hearts to change their attitudes, mainly when it comes to election time, because it was awful, awful. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
See a hand? Good evening. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Joyce Rudin, 38 Woodland Avenue. I just have a couple of questions about the resolutions that you're passing tonight. I did try to look at them online, but I still don't really feel like I have enough information. There's Resolution 255-18 that deals with a contract for underground storage tank removal and contaminated soil removal, which is at the firehouse on Pleasant Valley Way. And the following resolution, which is 256-18, together, they're spending almost $200,000. And my first question to the council is, were there more than one bid on both of these contracts? That's the first question that I have. The second question that I have is that this is, both of these removals of contaminated soil are taking place in buildings or near where people are working, both the fireplace and the Public Works Building. And I would like to know if it is safe for the people who are in those buildings to be working if there is contamination right in their area? And then the third question I have is, where is the contaminated soil that is being removed going? I have often been very concerned that that soil is going to our recycling center, which is then used by our residents as free soil, and I'd just like to know where the soil is going. And I want to just be assured that it's not going to our township.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Good evening, council members. My name's Lauren Swedvillas, and I'm a 16-year resident in West Orange. I can't say it's my favorite place. I've lived all over the place, but we have some great aspects here in town that I certainly love. It's where my wife and I have raised our two daughters. It's where we've made friends. There's convenience to the city, activities nearby, and good food all around us. And West Orange is close to work. It's also a place I spend time trying to improve, perhaps too much time, depending on who you talk to. I believe improvements come with change, and change is what our country was founded on. It's something we do as a species. It's something our tiny blue planet has done and will continue to do long after we're here in Town Hall. Change. Recently, some of the changes I spent time advocating for were political change. This past election cycle, I supported candidates for change, candidates on the state level, candidates on the municipal level, and candidates for the Board of Education. I did so not as a paid person and not as a township employee. I spent time meeting amazing neighbors here in town. I canvassed all areas of West Orange and met incredible candidates, such as Cindy Matu Brown, who's here, Jeremiah Salinas and Monica Prokowski, Terry Trix Scales and Susan Scarpa, and Councilman Krokowiac, who I already knew as an incredible asset of West Orange. Because of the experiences meeting these candidates, canvassing door-to-door, and attending debates, coffees, and forums, I now feel closer to West Orange than I ever have before. I only had one very unfortunate experience that took place on Election Day while in the Gregory School parking lot, a school my daughter's attended, a parking lot where I have helped washed cars to raise money and parked my own car as I attended parent-teacher conferences, school concerts, and to just drop off donated supplies. I stood in that parking lot with others who I have known for years as we engaged voters and asked for their support in getting our favorite candidate selected. I stood alongside Jeremiah Salinas at Gregory School, as well as council candidate Monica Prokowski and Councilman Cirillo. I stood earlier at St. Cloud Elementary School alongside Councilman Guarino, Councilman Krokowiac, and Board of Ed candidate Terry Trix Scales. And our conversations were polite, and our conversations were professional. Thank you very much for that. A formal letter will be sent via email regarding the recent incident to your township email account and to that of the mayor. I do not wish to state the incident here publicly or the township employee's name here publicly. Frankly, I fear for my own family's safety and that of my own. To all our town council members, I thank you for your service, and I commend you on your work. We may disagree on what West Orange needs to move forward, but we certainly agree on improving West Orange for future generations. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Other comments?
Good evening, council members.
Welcome. Name and address?
My name is Marcy Apirt. I'm a resident at 161 Main Street here in West Orange, and I'm just going to address the gentleman who just was up at the podium. And since I was not a witness to the incident, I can't speak to what was said or what conduct was there. All I can say is that my son, however, was in attendance and was taped. And the gentleman who just left the podium was asked not to post the video with my minor child in the video and refused to take it down. However, to their credit, the administrators of the website did remove the video. And this is what I do have to say. We are all adults, and there is nothing wrong with having a healthy political debate, and we can all agree to disagree. There is no need for nastiness or rudeness. I've sat in this room for 10 minutes, and it seems to me that if you're going to come up here and just bitch about what, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That's quite all right.
That's.
Because you don't agree with the current administration, you're entitled to that. However, it is unnecessary to be rude and to have discourse while other people are speaking. And there are those of us in this room who are old enough to know better. However, that being said, like I said, there is nothing wrong with healthy political debate. You have a right to disagree. You have a right to your opinion. What you do not have a right to is if you are asked to remove the minor child from the video, is to tell us that. That's not up to me. Let the administrators do it. I'm just saying that, given the current climate in this country and how antagonistic and aggressive people have become, if I am comfortable with my child being in something, then you should have the common decency and at least the maturity to know that the correct thing to do would be to remove the video. He has a right to complain about whoever he wants to complain about, but if you engage people with nastiness, if you can dish it, you should be able to take it. And that is my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I read you rapids since it was?
No. Thank you. No thanks. Write it in your letter. No thanks. Anthony?
I'd like to know her position with the township and who she's representing.
Sorry.
So Anthony, you're up.
I'm here. Hi, Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo, and I only have some happy news to report tonight. So beginning this Friday, November 16th, for the next three weekends, and then continuing every night from December 7th to the 31st is the Holiday Light Spectacular at Turtleback Zoo. It's from 5:00 to 9:00 every night, sponsored by PSE&amp;G Covanta, the Essex County Parks Foundation, and the Zoological Society of New Jersey. The event is all, it's supported through donation, so there is no cost to taxpayers. It is free admission, and in exchange for a beautiful display of over 50 figures, winter and holiday-themed figures, and over a million lights, all we ask you to do is bring some non-perishable food, new unwrapped toys, or gently-used winter coats. These are donated to the community food bank and various organizations throughout the county to help the less fortunate. Also, during the month of December, we have various events at Kipps Castle, at the Environmental Center, and on December 1st and December 2nd is the Historic Holiday House Tour, of which the Glenmont is a part of. So it's the first and the second. There's 15 stops. Each site has different times, different activities that they offer, so if you have a chance, we invite you to take part in that. All this is on our website, which is essexcountynj.org. And then Councilwoman Castellino did ask me to respond to a New York Times story about a New York dog-walking company that was bringing their dogs to South Mountain Reservation and allowing the dogs to run off-leash. So this is a statement that we issued, that the county executive issued once we heard about the story. "We are alarmed by a story in the New York Times about dog-walking companies letting their dogs roam off-leash in South Mountain Reservation. Having dogs run free is not allowed in Essex County Parks, including South Mountain, and poses a safety risk for other people enjoying our open spaces as well as the dogs. We understand the importance of allowing dogs to run off-leash and have created four dog parks in South Mountain Reservation, Brookdale Park, Hilltop Reservation, and Wattsessing Park. We do not condone the activities of this company, and will work with our sheriff's office to ensure our rules are followed and our parks are safe." So following up on that, we are having discussions with the sheriff's office. I'll be honest, it's not an easy fix, and we just ask for people's patience and understanding and also for people to adhere to the ordinances that prohibit dogs from running off-leash.
Anywhere in town?
Yes.
Anywhere in town, not just the reservation?
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
I thought you were going to mention something about the sustainable gingerbread.
Well, I kind of glossed over that. That was at the Environmental Center. So December 1st is the registration deadline, and then December 3rd, which is Monday, is when all creations have to be dropped off. We've been doing this since the Environmental Center opened, so I think this is our 13th year. It's a little twist on gingerbread houses. So instead of just your traditional gingerbread house, we ask entries to have some sort of environmental feature, whether it be gumdrop solar panels or pretzel rain barrels, things like that. Not only is it fun for families to work on these projects, but they get to learn about little things that they can do to help the environment.
Quite educational, and it's not just one feature, it's seven features.
Yes.
That's a lot.
You're a lot more knowledgeable than I am. There you go.
It's hard to do. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay.
Seeing none, closed public comment. Thank everyone for their comments this evening. Anyone specific? Any comments specifically? I think the most concrete would be Joyce's, Joyce Rudin's comment about the underground storage tanks. I know that this has been ongoing. I don't even know for how many years. The soil is not transferred to the recycling center. That is not the soil. These are firms that dispose of this. There is a list of bids in the resolution, or the other vendors that were included in this, in this resolution. There's not much. I'm sorry. Okay. You have to.
In terms of safety, we take that very serious with our, not only our employees, but other people in the area, where they live there, they're visiting there, and all of this activity will be done with the safety mind of everyone.
And my school is right next door to that, so we have been looking at that for 21 years now, so we're well aware of the conditions. We were going to, I know Cindy is here to say welcome, newly elected to the council. I know Cindy is here to say welcome newly elected to the council, but the results are not certified yet, according to the county. And we know just here in West Orange that there were over 3,000 mail-in applications and over 500 provisional ballots that needed to be counted. So I understand tomorrow, November 14th, is supposed to be the... No?
Not even close.
Not even close. Okay, so initially...
What, are we Florida?
You know, it's not just... Right, it wasn't just West Orange. It is the county that has to be certified, so as of a few days ago, it was November 14th and I'm hearing otherwise.
Yes. Would you like me to?
Absolutely. Thank you.
So I spoke with Jennifer Ferry of Chris Durkin's office today and she said that the vote by mails, I don't know if they're completely tallied, but the results will be going up on their website tomorrow. They're waiting for that. And then she's supposed to send me a PDF that she sends me after every election, which is very helpful because it has the tally for every office and ward and district and it's very thorough. The provisional ballots, they are not going to get to, she said, most likely this weekend. And that was not a definite... So there's no definite date as to when they are going to count those. So that's why it has not been certified. And in order to... They have to count all the provisionals from every single town in Essex County before they can certify our town. Because if somebody comes from another township and says, "I need to vote..." I live here now. And I need to vote provisionally because I didn't change my address. And then they leave and then they go back to their old town in Essex County and they vote at their old polling place. They compare that. So they have to do that for every single town in Essex County, so it's very time-consuming. So they can't certify the election until that is complete.
So next year, are they going to just automatically assume the vote by mail? They're going to let people actually register so we don't have this mess?
Yeah, I know. But I don't know. But that was not Essex County, I believe. That came from the governor's office.
Yeah. From the state. So crazy.
Yeah. Yeah, they changed a lot of the rules at the last minute.
Okay.
Okay.
Comments?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. So for the town that is... Was named the nicest community, thank goodness that person wasn't here on Election Day. Unfortunately, you know, all parties, everybody gets revved up, they get excited, but still, you know, no excuse for some of the behavior. Mark, to your point, you're right. I can't say enough when people ask, you know, we're nonpartisan, especially with the school board. But in today's world, you know, things get a little convoluted. I know in this race alone, the NGEA was heavily involved, our police union, you had union groups involved on other sides. So, yeah, so everybody wants their candidates to win. So... And we are nonpartisan. And I know I've always tried to portray myself, whether when I sat on the school board or here, as nonpartisan because when I sit in this seat, I represent everyone in the township. So... But again, that's, you know, different, you know, different... People feel differently about different things, but there was nothing inappropriate. That could be done. That was done. Hard to comment on the comments, but I do feel the need to say that the online banter definitely got out of control, very disappointing, especially being the nicest community. I don't personally go on and get involved with it because it just never leaves to anywhere that is a good place. And Ms. Holloway, thank you for your statements because there were campaigns that were very positive and that's the way it should be. Everybody should promote themselves and give the voters an opportunity to see what they have to offer and bring to the table. I wish tonight we could have congratulated people, but unfortunately, we can't. But I will say, everyone did work hard, whether whatever sides you agreed on. Everyone that ran in these races really did work hard. Sometimes I was disappointed with the way things played out and hopefully all camps could learn from the experience where they could move forward in the future. But that's what I'm going to say about that for now. And I am also going to apologize because my behavior on Election Day by, you know, 7:30, when you're there from 6 o'clock in the morning, you get a little tired. Joyce Rudin is in the audience and her and I got a little stressed at one point. So Joyce, I will personally apologize to you because it just gets a little stressful sometimes, but we're all neighbors. We all have... We all care about the township. Everyone that comes to these meetings, I feel that they do, but especially online and with children. When there's children around, we all need to be very mindful. And so thank you all for coming down tonight with your comments. And again, remember, we are the nicest community. Council President.
Thank you, Council. It doesn't matter. Whichever you like to do.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay. Just wanted to thank you everybody for coming down and speaking. I just wanted to follow up with some of the questions that were asked about the agenda, I think, and also Ms. Morelli asked about the status of her request to change the solicitation ordinance. And I think that might be Mr. Kizer who might be handling that, so I thought I'd throw it at him.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I've actually answered this before. I think this has come up a number of times. Mrs. Morelli has brought the issue up at least twice that I can recall, maybe more often. And I, in fact, addressed the council about this and indicated that if you folks want to make a change, people feel strongly about it. We can certainly consider it. I can redraft the ordinance so that it has a specific time instead of sunset, as it is set forth generally in the ledger, which is... That is local papers we can get that has that information in it on a daily basis. My view was, when I drafted that ordinance and the council at the time agreed, and I don't remember how long ago, it was quite a while ago, is that most people object to people soliciting or peddling after dark. And that's why I use that definition. It was a sensible definition. It means that there are longer periods of time in the summer than there are in the winter. But most people seem to disagree with people coming to their door when it's dark out. If you folks want to make it a certain time, that's fine. We can do that. I don't have any idea how the mayor's going to feel about it, but, you know, I don't think he would have strong objections, one way or the other. So if the council has strong feelings, let me know.
There was also a question that Mr. Meyer was raised about... If I paraphrase him correctly, he said the township shouldn't allow partisan advertising in a nonpartisan election, but I don't know that there's anything we can do to stop that, so I thought I'd throw it out to you.
I think that's a matter of free speech, frankly. You know, I mean, and it's not a municipal issue. It's a... At the very least, a state issue. It's not a constitutional issue, so I don't think we have any control over that, frankly. And I think, I mean, thinking about it, whether you're a Democrat or Republican or some other party, I think you have the right, you know, to take a position in an election. And I don't think anybody can really stop that as a matter of constitutional law, but...
And I know Ms. Rudin had also asked some questions about a couple of resolutions having to do with mediation. And I didn't know... Did we answer them all already?
I think so, yeah. The bids are in the resolution and soil, the company.
Yeah, I thought so. I mean, I don't... And I don't... I'm not the expert with respect to that and Lenny apparently is not here. Certainly, we don't take contaminated soil to anyplace other than where it has to go, which is... It's under state statute and regulations. We can't just dump it anywhere. It's got to... We follow strict rules. Whatever vendor we hire has to follow strict rules about where it's taken, so...
Has to go to licensed facilities.
Right. And I want to just try to clarify that 255 is a little bit unusual in how we contracted the service. Because if I understand correctly, we're using a vendor who we obtained through our membership in the Bergen County Cooperative. And so that vendor was approved by, I guess, the Bergen County Freeholders and has a set price... Has a set price menu and that's how we obtained them. We didn't actually go out and do the competitive bidding ourselves. We're just taking something that is allowed under the state law and so it's a little bit unusual, so...
Well, it's actually not unusual at all. We do quite a bit of cooperative purchasing and we come before council quite often with cooperative resolutions. And in this case, it's one of the areas where it actually makes the most sense because the truth is, as a municipality, you know, our opportunity to do this type of work is limited. You know, once we remove all of our underground storage tanks, we're never going to go after this again. So we don't have a lot of purchasing clout. But when you took... You take a county, and in this case, a county that has membership throughout the state, then the opportunities for vendors to do more than just one job based on a contract that they put out and get... It gives them incentive because they're going to have so many different opportunities to do better pricing than we could ever do with a formal bid. So this is actually a classic example of what we should be doing and what we do do on a regular basis is to find the best way to get, you know, competitive pricing for the things that we do.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Anything left to add?
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming tonight and I want to commend the members of the public for your decorum and your discussion. You're not going to disagree or agree on everything, but your decorum means a lot. It says a lot. As my council colleagues have said, we are the nicest town. And I believe, I always believed that West Orange is a nice town. And I just hope going forward now, the election is over, let's move forward and make West Orange even better than what it has been. And we can do it. We work with new people, we deal with new people. At the end of the day, we're all friends, we're all neighbors. Let's question, let's have decent discussions. I've had many discussions with many of you, Sally and everybody. We've always discussed about things and we can't agree on everything, but we have agreed on a number of things. And you know what? At the end of the day, we have a better relationship. You don't like to cross to the other side of the street when you see somebody walking down. And that's the way I like to see West Orange. And so I commend you tonight, whether you agree with us or not, or I agree with you or not, your decorum is very important. Let's show everybody how great a town West Orange is. We're not... We're not perfect. We're not. But we can be better. And remember, our children look up to us. You know, our children look up to how we react and that's how they'll react later on. So we want to make America a better, less hateful country? Let's show our kids a great example. So I thank you all for all for that. I wanted just a big shout out to the county because I always have to thank the county because if it wasn't for the cooperation that we've gotten from the Board of Freeholders and the county executive, we could have never accomplished and create things with our pedestrian safety and advisory board. And there's more that we're going to do and there's more that we can do. So the county deserves our appreciation for working with us and making us a partner with them. So I always want to thank the county executive, of course, thanking Mr. Puglisi for being here and letting the Board of Freeholders and the county executive know that the township of West Orange is very appreciative. And I know the school of children at West Orange High and the kids that drive are very appreciative because of the light, it allows the drive. And there's more that we have to do and there's more we will do, particularly with areas of safety and areas where there are high levels of senior citizens and residents with, you know, accessibility issues. So putting it all together, you know, let's just take West Orange forward and I thank... I congratulate all the winners and let's just take West Orange forward. And I thank you all for that. Thank you, Council President.
Okay. Time to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting and executive session, October 30th, 2018. Consent. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills? Are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions? Are any resolutions being pulled? Karen, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone that's walking out. Enjoy your family. Are any resolutions being pulled this evening? I just had questions on the dates, on the senior citizen. That was my only question. Any other resolutions? Any questions?
No. Had all my questions answered.
Yeah, I just had a question, just a general question, because of these two unusual resolutions, 255 and 256, whether the township administration has a process that reviews potential pay-to-play issues? Because I had asked some questions about pay-to-play issues and it didn't appear that the administration had gone through that, but I just wanted to see if they had looked at these two specific issues and then also, do you have a process in place going forward?
We absolutely have a process in place. I mean, we... For instance, the contract with the co-op, when they go out to bid, they have to follow the law and in terms of fair and open process or if not a fair and open process. We follow the law in terms of when we do it, when we do, we go out with our request for qualifications. That's part of the law. So, I mean, I'm not sure what you feel we're not doing.
No, I'm not saying... I didn't feel that you weren't doing. I just... I had asked the questions whether Slack Environmental had been checked for pay-to-play. And I think I understand what you're saying. They had to disclose that to the Bergen Freeholders, but what I was asking was, when we use them, do we... Is that something that we have to check on, pay-to-play for our own selves, not for the Bergen Freeholders? Does that make sense?
Yeah. This contract is administered through Bergen County. It's their responsibility to take care of those actions. When we do it ourselves, it's our responsibility.
Okay. So in this specific case, it was up to the Bergen Cooperative to check to see if there was a pay-to-play issue with West Orange? That's what I'm asking, whether, as it's applied to West Orange?
I think you're misconstruing the law. The law does not, with a fair and open process, it does not mean that a particular vendor can or cannot make contributions. It's whether or not, did you go through a competitive process? And that's what that certifies, that it's gone through a competitive process.
So pay-to-play does not apply to that contract?
The pay-to-play laws do apply to the contract. Every contract, the way you go out and do it, for instance, if you don't do a fair and open process, then any vendor has to disclose any contributions because it's not done in a competitive way. And the objective of the law is not to prevent people who make contributions from getting contracts. The intention of the law is that if they do make... If they enter into an agreement or a contract that it was not competitively bid, to disclose whether or not there were contributions. If you... When you go out and you do a competitive bid, that's... You know, they still have a First Amendment right to support anybody they want to do. But as long as we do competitive, where you have different people, you're going to get the best price. And then, you know, that's the whole intent of the law.
Okay. So that's good for 255, so I appreciate you clarifying. On 256, that's slightly different in that we have an LSRP whose we've retained to work on that project and then we basically don't... We don't do a competitive process for these follow-on contracts.
On the contract, we do... This is a competitive... This is a competitive process that we use in our request for qualifications. So that, you know, they disclose... They give us our, you know, their records. We tell them they have to comply with pay-to-play and they certify that they do. And so it's under the same pay-to-play laws and it's open and fair process.
Okay. So just for this specific contract, the person that we're using as the LSRP has actually changed firms. And so I can't recall the details, but when they change the firms, does that something that we check? That the new firm responded?
This firm also responded originally. So this is not where... This is not... And now I'm getting the gist of where your concern was. This is not a situation where we were with this firm and we vetted this firm and then the person that knows this job moved somewhere else and so we're just switching to them with unforeseen. This particular company, we can do this only because this company also submitted their credentials when we had our opening... credentials when we had our open and fair process. Otherwise, you're right, we couldn't do that. We would have to go through a different process, which would not have been an open fair if we wanted to do that.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you. That's all I have.
Are you pulling?
No.
Okay. Councilman?
No.
Good.
Is there a motion to approve?
Before, you know, either, seems to me that with respect to Resolution 258-18, well, that can be passed, I suppose, on consent, okay.
Yes.
Can we do that at the end of the meeting? That was the plan, to do that?
Right. Right. But that particular can be approved, yes. Is there a motion to approve?
Very great. Just to follow on with what Mr. Kizer had said, 258-18 is a resolution authorizing the executive session. And I just want to make sure everybody knew that, if you hadn't seen the agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Ordinance on second and final reading, 2555-18, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-37.1B, Municipal Parking Yards, Metered Parking, Permit Parking, Time Limited Parking, and 7-23.1, Turns Restricted, are the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviat?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Any discussion, any comments? Public hearing, any comments on this ordinance? Just to explain, this is parking out, parking, this is the Legislative History Parking Yard, number 13, previously located at 463-481 Pleasant Valley Way, has been relocated to 4 Haller Road due to construction to the new Chase Bank on that site. The Land Use Board approval of Chase Bank at 471 Pleasant Valley Way required that left turns out of the rear municipal parking yard be prohibited. New parking yard number 16, located at 665 Eagle Rock Avenue, is located on the westbound side behind the Pleasant Valley Way businesses and is utilized by local residents patronizing these businesses. This lot has not been newly constructed, replaced, has been, I'm sorry, this lot has been newly constructed, replacing parking spaces lost due to the construction of Chase Bank. Other parts of the ordinance talk about a left turn prohibited on the Haller Road.
Yeah, so this lot, yeah, so my comment here, so the lot that we're discussing behind Chase Bank is the commuter parking lot, so that where the shuttle bus comes and takes, or they take the bus on the corner. And then the lot across the street is the lot that we approve for the businesses.
Right.
I just wanted to differentiate for the publics.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2555-18 on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviat?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Ordinance is on first reading, 2556-18, bond ordinance providing for the local units ample share of capital improvement projects for the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties, buy and in the township of West Orange and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,570,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,570,000 bonds or notes to finance the costs thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviat?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Any comments on, you want to say, I mean, this was a presentation that we had months ago from the Joint Union?
Joint Union.
Joint Meeting.
Right, Joint Union.
We better not be giving one and a half million dollars to someplace called Joint Union. Joint Meeting is our sewer.
Yes.
Waste processing.
Joint Meeting of Essex and Union Counties, that's what I picked up.
Oh, okay.
I never knew when it came up. Do you have any questions for me? I'm saying, it's like, you know, they're still waiting, like you said, this thing will move forward once FEMA moves forward with funding, because remember, if FEMA doesn't commit to what we agreed to with the presentation, this doesn't go forward. But they believe FEMA will, you know, come through it because remember, if they don't do this, the potential for billions of dollars in damages for the next superstorm would be catastrophic for every community, so.
They made such a comprehensive presentation, so it made sense. Okay. I know it was a late addition, sorry for that, but...
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion?
I don't know.
Nope.
Think we're going to adjourn as the council, or not? Or do we have to do executive session?
We can adjourn then. Oh, yeah, actually, yes.
Well, we don't have anybody waiting for ABC, so.
I just had an issue on pending matters. I just wanted to get an update on where things stand with Aaron's, the market over on Eagle Rock Avenue.
They're actually doing very well.
Yeah.
They've got everything fixed up, they moved everything, brought it back against their building, they cleaned the whole back lot out. Although this morning I went and there was some garbage on the ground, and I called them, and I went back at lunchtime, it was picked up. They're doing very well.
Yeah, I was thinking about the noise, the noise issue with the neighbors.
The noise issue has been taken care of.
Okay. So has anybody talked to the neighbors about whether they think it's been taken care of?
It was measured at their homes, from what I understand, by the county.
So all of the improvements to lower the noise put out by the refrigeration, they're all done, they're all implemented?
Yeah.
As far as I know, they were still doing some stuff last week, but I didn't follow up with them today, to be honest with you. But as far as I know, most of the work is done, if not all.
Okay.
Yeah, if you stop by their parking lot, and, because I sit in their parking lot, and you could, it's, the noise level dropped tremendously. It's just a slight hum now. But you have to be, like, and then you could drive to the back of the parking lot, and you won't even hear it.
And I mean, just, I haven't spoken with Ms. Sui, or her husband, or, forgetting the name of the other woman.
Ms. DeMaio.
Next door, right. So, but the fact that I haven't heard from them suggests to me that the problem has been resolved because they were pretty aggressive about, you know, calling us and getting in touch with us. And I know that Mr. Aaron's indicated that they would be taking care of the problem. I just have to assume that it's done, so. And it did pass, they were retested by the county, and they passed the test apparently, so.
Okay. So we didn't have to resort to notices of violation?
No. And the other thing is, I may, since we're, it's pending matters and an open discussion, I may be ultimately recommending a slight change to our noise ordinance because, quite frankly, the decibel level is no longer an enforceable provision based on state regulations. And I think the rest of the ordinance survives without a problem. It's a standard nuisance-type ordinance, but the specific reference with respect to mechanical equipment or refrigeration equipment and so forth that has that decibel level is not enforceable under state law anymore. So haven't quite decided how to handle it, but I may do something about it, so.
I do have a question on that, though. Typically, don't the state statutes supersede anything that we do? Because our decibel level was lower than the state.
Right. And that's part of the problem. The state has basically preempted the field of noise regulation with respect to decibel levels. And frankly, we, I think we're in a better off position to let the county do the enforcement under the state law, and that's what we did in this instance, and that's what we plan on doing going forward. In order to have an enforceable municipal regulation, we would have to adopt a model ordinance, which gets complicated and convoluted and would frankly be more expensive for us because of the things we'd have to do. So it just makes more sense to me to let the decibel level part portion of the ordinance be enforced by the county and to change our ordinance so that it's strictly a nuisance ordinance, which would be enforceable in our municipal courts, but quite honestly, it's extremely difficult to enforce those ordinances because there are no objective standards, it's a subjective test. It's just very difficult. I can, I know I tried a noise control matter many years ago in municipal court for the township. I know that Richard has tried one in the past. I think those are the only two, and I think we had mixed results with those, so.
Councilman, did you have another?
No, no, you asked my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we can adjourn, right, Ken? And then go into it?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Ken, good night to all, and...